Okay, the agenda item is discussion of the village board regarding the parking plan for the building in New Paltz passed on April 10th, 2013. Basically, what we are going to discuss is re-amending the law. And we will also discuss having it up for public hearing on September 11th prior to our normal meeting that's happening that night. That meeting is scheduled to be strictly about the DEP aqueduct closures and what we need to do to accommodate that. So it's going to be a special meeting with a pretty specific focus, but we will start off with the local law before that. I don't know if, I think people want to maybe step in. Do you want to start off with what you, your amendment between what Sally proposed and...
We can, I mean, I don't know if we want to take, open up to public comment first just because people might not want to, people may or may not want to hear what we have to say or be here to talk about something else.
I just came off to make a public comment about Kurt Vivaldi being let go. I have to say, I was really disheartened that I called on Thursday after working on a long project with him and volunteering my time because I know how strapped the building department and planning department have been. And so I contacted him to turn in some work that I volunteered to do because, you know, he'd been really responsive about this problem that we've been having in the village that is a health problem and a safety issue. And, you know, I just was basically needed him because I'd already started with this issue with Kathy Moniz. And, you know, she got the go and then it was like, starting over from square one, or whatever happened, I don't even know. But starting over from square one because she's no longer here and with Kurt, who was very responsive and I just felt like he was a really good person to work with. And now I'm really sad to learn that he's gone because I feel like I might be at square one again with something that I feel is very important. And also, you know, he was very responsive when we were being bullied by a developer on Church Street and my road was being dug up right in front of my driveway and I couldn't get out of my car. You know, he took care of problems really quickly and now I feel like there's no one there to do that. So I just wanted to come out and let you know that it's really unfortunate. And hopefully you can get somebody in there or Kurt back in. I don't know what is possible, but something has to happen because I just feel like the village is deteriorating at this point.
All right, can you share the information with Katie so she can get it out to us? What you're working on?
Sure. Let me give you the phone number for the office.
Oh, I have it.
Just call me first thing in the morning.
Okay.
Anyone else for a public comment?
Nice to meet you from the New Paltz Regional Chamber of Commerce. Just want to say thank you very much for your proposal that you can have in for tonight. And overall, it's a very good constructive reply to the issues of any business owners in the area and also for the village. But there's just one thing on there, the proposal can be open to amendment, to have the cap at two hours and to eliminate the reference to a core, you know, main business district. If that can be done, completely eliminated and to be consistent throughout, that's okay with the increase that you already have in there, but with that increase, but to have that cap consistent and particularly downtown because you have, again, the road is narrow and maybe potential traffic hazard by curtailing in and out behavior of cars. And also to help the businesses to keep their customers inside the building to do what they have to do. So if you have for the committee chamber, if you really care to consider doing that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And that's when I move across the chair. Go ahead, Kathy.
I just, I only had a minute briefly to look over the amendment, but I believe encourage reconsidering the one hour limit on Main Street simply because the Main Street businesses are not entirely in out businesses. There are Americanists, there are middle schools, there are restaurants. It's tough because we don't have handy little pockets of one type of business. We all interact next to each other to say that, you know, this area should go faster and this kind of, it's evenly spread throughout the downtown.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question back to that. What was motivation for making one hour on Main Street and two hour on Main Street? Is it really slow down traffic? No, it's, I mean, it's the idea of is turnover, but I guess maybe this speaks to your point. If I should have said this, the amendment that we are going to be looking at tonight, well, there was one that Sally wrote for last week that we discussed that kept Main Street at two hour, at one hour. The one that we have tonight, well, there were two that we're looking at tonight. One was written by the attorney and one I modified to combine the two basically, and it makes all of the two hours.
I guess, so maybe that is a place to start for you to tell us what you...
I just, I just, the order is public comment first. And if people wanted to like make their comments and had to be somewhere else, I wanted to let people make their comments. So that was, that was why I redid it that way. I think that was just kind of procedurally what I was thinking.
So I ran to Ariana today and she emailed me the amendment, which I guess from hearing was Sally's version. But I did take the liberty of emailing that amendment out to a number of people in the village.
No, thank you for doing that.
Some people who couldn't make the meeting emailed me some comments and I thought I had two that I printed, but I just checked my email and there's four. Shall I read them or...
I mean, if you would like to read them all, you can. I don't, I have no problem with that. Maybe if they all say the same, the kind of the same thing, we can know that there's five that things are in there. But that's it.
But listen for Mike Beck, I think is an important one, you know, I believe that...
I think he sent that to us also, right?
Did you? So I believe that 50 cents everywhere is better than a dollar, but more important is the proposed one hour limit. I feel strongly that the two hour limit is in everyone's best interest. My rationale is simple. In virtually all cases, a two hour limit will discourage the people that we don't want using the parking spots for parking on Main Street, employees, local residents. If that's true, then why would you want to limit the time that anyone else wants to spend downtown? Please consider a two hour limit on Main Street. And that's from Mike, who has a business on Main Street. I got another one from Clement at Earth Business, I just thought I'd read. I don't think I can make it this time, but I want to mention that one hour on Main Street is too high. I have several customers already complaining about it and wanting to boycott shopping in the village. I hope whoever present can speak about that. The rate does not just affect businesses on Main Street, but all businesses in the downtown area. Because when tourists' business stop, they don't just shop on Main Street, they shop at all the businesses. If we lose tourists that are passing traffic, people heading to and from the mountains, the businesses on North Front Church, et cetera, will be negatively affected as well. And yet, all the emails I got were pretty much similar, suggesting that, I mean, Kathy Pressman at the last meeting talked about consistency.
I've actually repeated that to other people and said, Kathy actually gave us some comments.
Yeah, I don't think people coming, it's not like we have signs like in New York City that say two hour on this block, one hour on that block. You don't know the parking until you get out of your car and go put money in. And I just think having just the village do the same, 50 cents, I understand the 50 cents versus 25. And some of the emails were kind of urging that we fight for 25, but I think you'd find that the village businesses were open to that change and understanding you need to have some kind of an increase. But the one hour, one dollar anywhere, and I think last week at our meeting, I think everyone was very consistently saying one hour is too much.
Yeah.
So I think it would be very insulting to those people who came out and spoke that you would think that Main Street was somehow not concerned enough. And I think the same thing with the two hours, I think, I think Main Street deserves the same. And you had said from Prospect Street down, if you look at what's on Prospect Street down to the library is all, nothing but restaurants, really.
Right.
And those people all need, all need two hours to use. Sorry.
Yes, and that's...
Which is awesome.
Two hours.
So again, that's everyone's comment, I think, is thank you for being open to the change, but let's go all the way.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of what I, you know, wanted to amend in what we were, what Sally had written before we were sent, Joe wrote up, was based on our conversation earlier today.
I guess, one other thing that I've been hearing a lot, this is not, for me, it's not a tourism issue. What I'm hearing mostly is from people who live in the area, people's families, people's children, is really people who live in the community who are reacting a lot to parking. But I think that it serves them, even serves the local tourists and make it affordable and easy for them to do. That's really crucial.
Well, it's not really serving the tourists, it's the local businesses.
Well, and the residents, you know, the, for me, the residents in New Paltz are the ones who come to my sort of, I want them to be, want to come back.
I too have also got that comment. I mean, I have a mixture at the yoga studio of regular steady clients for 15, 17 years now and, and weekenders. And I've gotten numerous complaints from, you know, the people who live and work in New Paltz. And I just don't see that hour, I mean, it doesn't do anybody any good.
It's simply not doable for an hour and 15 minute class.
No.
I mean, I would appreciate it.
And it's not, yeah, it's not doable for poking around three different stores and maybe going out to lunch or even going out to lunch on a busy weekend day. It's not doable, there's just no way. The other thing I just, and I'm kind of late in the game with this, and maybe, I just want to know also why we weren't notified by this because I've talked to about six maybe different business owners who said that they didn't hear about this until it was changed and that other people said that people were notified, but...
I mean, there was something sent out, it was to a pretty small list from what I understand, but it wasn't sent by the board members. It was in the paper, it was posted on the village website for months. It was first introduced last October, so there was a lot of time where it was public and then it was voted on in April. But that doesn't, that doesn't mean that there couldn't have been some kind of notice to go out, but it's not, one of the things that we discussed last week, I am the kind of person who wants to notify people, but it doesn't, it's not within our, it's not within like the law that we have to notify people. Especially when we have met all of the legal public notices for all kinds of public hearings and things like that. The public hearing was kept open for two different meetings, so there was, and there were people who came and commented that we changed some of the stuff that people commented on, in particular about alternate side of the street parking and more of the side streets and midtown, not the very downtown area. So if people had, were, you know, made aware and were able to come out, this probably could have been not an issue right now that we're all dealing with, basically. But, you know, I don't, I think that the blame is, you know, I take as much blame as I feel like I would take if I were on the other side and, you know, because I think we should all be active citizens in our government, but not everybody has the time to do that and I totally get that, so, but sorry you're running the line.
I'm also, my name's Michael Zeeler. I'm also here sort of late, so we weren't even come last week, we were out of town. So I apologize if I say things people have already said or, but let me give you a little background. I was the person who was responsible for the changes to the parking plan in 2006 and so forth. We made extensive changes for specific reasons. The map that we made is actually still on your village website, although I guess it's not relevant anymore. Part of my concern is I have no idea why you even came up with a new parking plan, which I just, because of this, I found it on the website. I'll have to say you have to log into Google in order to get it, so that's a problem if you're over there that can just download it.
That's not supposed to be that way, so I'm glad you told us that.
In any event, there's a lot of good stuff in here, actually. There are a number of things that concern me. One is the planning board, although they don't have to be consulted about this, was never consulted about this. And I think that was unfortunate since we deal with a lot of parking issues and I happen to be over in the planning board, but I'm not speaking for the board as a whole. The other thing is, to echo what everybody's saying, we had originally instituted one hour parking in very limited locations along Main Street, only on the, whatever, the side where P&amp;G's and so forth is, in that block between North Front and Church, and then a few spaces with Plaidville. And the specific reasons for doing that was because some business owners had said that for very short-term, customers who want to come in and pick up something, they were finding it very hard to park in front of stores. So that was the rationale for doing that, and we didn't do it anywhere else. And we made a number of changes, including metering at Plaidville lot and so forth. The intent at the time was because people were saying there wasn't enough parking downtown. And the goal was to determine, after we did a survey, you know, actually did a parking survey to see how spaces turn over at different times of the week, and that was part of our RSG study, we studied. The feeling was that there wasn't actually enough parking spaces, but they were being utilized for long-term parking by residents and students.
Right.
Which is why we needed the lot. And so I don't understand why you all are either increasing rates for our, in particular, lowering the allowable time for parking to one hour in so many locations. You don't need to answer that now, but in any event, I think it would be a huge mistake to have any more one hour parking spaces than we had put back in 2006. And if business owners feel that those are inappropriate, then they should speak up. But I have to say honestly, once the dust settled, we didn't get any complaints about that. I know we got complaints about the Plaidville lot for a while because I had made a mess of the parking meter, but we fixed that. So I hope that you'll heed what the business owners are saying, and I think one hour is an enormous mistake to extend it and maybe even needs to be shrunk or eliminated if that's the case. Raising the rates, there ought to be a clear reason why you're doing that. I don't know, everybody assumes it's because you want more money. I don't know if that's the case or not, but again, I would ask that be clear. And then the, in terms of process, the study is, as I said, I think there's a lot of good stuff in here, but honestly, there hasn't been good public visibility about what you want to do here. And I think maybe having some public information sessions and some workshops about this might be a good idea going forward and then using that to help prioritize this because there are some parts of things worth doing.
I don't have much news to say, except that I'm a shopper. And they all know that, I've been reading many other stores, and I've never spent less than an hour downtown. And, you know, I often shop with my mother, who's very elderly and really can't do a lot of walking. So there's no way we're going to park far away from the stores and there's no way we're going to even be able to go downtown because lunch takes a long time with her and then, you know, you never go to lunch, you have to stop at the store and that store, and that's the case for me as well. And I, you know, I'd be more likely to go to Water Street Market and just, that's that. And I don't really know who these people are who are running into stores to pick something up. I mean, I, I know sometimes I will do that for, you know, Mexicali Blue for some takeout or...
Jack's.
Or Jack's, maybe people run into my cigarettes or get it from the coffee or quickly. I don't know if any of those people are relying, but if they are, I wasn't happy about that one hour limit, even in that very small stretch of Main Street, but it really hasn't been a problem for me. But to make any of the other areas less than one hour is a real inconvenience. So I'm just, from the other side as the shopper, I totally agree with what all the business owners are saying here.
Mark Rosen, I wasn't there last week. I shop in New Paltz, I don't live in New Paltz, but I've come downtown as many as five times, I think, last year.
Right.
If I'm inferring or getting scent in the wind, I think you may have recognized the folly at least of the one hour time.
From paper.
As it stands, that you keep downtown as friendly as it can be and certainly revisit the raised parking rates as well. As it stands right now, Main Street from the Lower Light to Wards Avenue is still quadruple the rate it was a few weeks ago, like the bad streets were what they became. So I would ask you not to minimize also the cost to residents and visitors. I saw a family of three get out of the car on Saturday, look at the price of the meter right in front of the old 36 Main and get them in their cars. They didn't have four quarters. So I just would ask you not to minimize that, the effect that that too has had on downtown.
Ariana, do you recall, and just for some people who weren't here the last time, Tom and I were not on the board just yet when this, when these proposals and then...
I did, probably. Yes, it's early, I'm sorry. But it is part of life. You guys have no blame here.
Can you explain what the rationale was behind the increased rate?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, well, one of the reasons is that it just hasn't been raised in a long time. And I regularly actually have heard people say, wow, the meters are so cheap here. And like people coming from Ithaca, for instance, they've said that, obviously people from New York City say that, you know, because it was, it was cheap. Maybe the increase was overkill, totally, well, you know, at the risk of that.
But is that a bad thing when people say something like that?
Um, no, but it just means that, you know, if you want to look at comparable places, some places have free parking, some places have, you know, parking that they charge more for, some places, you know, some places are on par for us. So that's, that's all that means, you know, it doesn't mean it's a good or a bad thing. It just means that there are, you know, it's not an outrageous thing to raise the meter prices. I personally don't drive. I walk or bike everywhere, I don't even have a driver's license. I choose to work in the village because I, it's walking distance. You know, so I think, you know, my mindset is one to move away from fossil fuels and I think as a society, we're going to be forced into doing so. I recognize that not everybody is capable of doing that, not everybody is going to do that, of course. But I do, I do know that sociologically speaking, legislating things does change people's behavior. People don't go 60 miles an hour down Main Street because if they did, they'd get a ticket for doing double the speed limit. People recycle and recycling culture has become such because it's been mandated. This is, you know, a categorically inherited fact. This is, this is just the way, the way human beings operate. If you want to change behavior, some of it needs to be legislated. So if we want to create a more walkable area where the people who have to drive, like the people taking up the parking spaces, whereas people who can walk, like you said, you shop with your mother who can't walk. So that's, that's a completely valid, well, that's what I'm saying, that's a valid reason to drive. But someone like myself, I should be walking and biking because I live on Pencil Hill, I don't have to drive. And I think that there are a lot of college students who will drive out of sheer laziness and we want to discourage that and encourage the people who are coming to visit our community to be the ones to park in these areas where parking is available. That is the thought process, just so nobody has to agree with it. I'm just telling my thought process and I'm open to disagree with it, I think that's okay, but that's part of where my thoughts are.
Understanding your thought process on that, I'm just wondering how, how then do you make that distinction in the cars that are downtown between the lazy college students and the tourists? They're all coming to the same spot.
There isn't a way to make the distinction, it's just definitely, it's just a way, it's a way to help shift the culture. And that's part of, I mean, that's part of why I became an elected official and if people don't like that, they'll vote for me next time. I'm okay with that.
Okay. Tom just pointed out that we're getting beyond public comment and discussion, so maybe if we could take one more quick comment and then we're going to close public comment and go right into our discussion.
I just wanted to remind you, last week, Professor Manos kind of pointed out that the parking plan, not just the meters or anything, but the whole parking plan was pretty whack, I guess, to use my kids' language, but I don't remember how she said it, but she really said, let's abandon it and start from scratch. And I, you know, she was my professor when I was a student, I think she's wonderful and I really would urge you to not even try to amend it, but let's, let's get a community together of businesses who, you know, I'm sure we can put together 10, 12 people who really represent the business community and that people who represent many other points of view, whether it's white petticoat or whatever, and let's, if you feel we need a plan beyond what Michael talked about and the plan already exists, let's, let's really make one, but let's not use that as a basis because there's some good stuff there, but there's also some crazy ideas too.
I'm completely open to that and I would love to help make that happen. Was it the person you were talking about, the woman sitting, actually, we're sitting now.
She was sitting right there.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, she, I did like her comment as well. All right, so I guess we'll go, I mean, we need to do something right now.
Yes.
That doesn't mean that that's the end of the conversation. I think actually it's the beginning.
So I'd like to close public comment and I do have one item to add to the agenda, Katie.
Yes, ma'am.
And it's basically asking Ariana if he would be the second to signature for now on the built some claims.
Sure.
I think you're probably doing most.
Yeah, absolutely. Does that have to be voted on?
I believe so, it's...
Canary.
It's, yeah, it's financial, I mean, is basically what it is, so you essentially be serving as an option.
Okay, cool.
Great, thank you. Okay, so discussion. Ariana, if you want to go ahead, I...
I will certainly, yeah, I'm going to take the lead. So the amendment that we were looking at last week kept Main Street at 50 cents per 30 minutes with a maximum of 60 minutes. What I basically took what Joe said this today, Joe's amendment, wait, it's the second one here, which both of you I believe have received, but for the public's knowledge, said that the parking meters for all meters except as otherwise designated hearing shall be 25 cents an hour with a maximum of blank hours, notwithstanding the foregoing parking meters at the village, all municipal lots shall be metered at blank cents per hour, no maximum. And he kept the part about core business area would be bagged and no meter fees required for holiday shopping from December 11th to the 25th. So what I wrote up and I basically just took what Joe wrote and combined the two things because one of the things that Sally had in the, in what she had given us for last week is that the parking meters for all meters except otherwise designated hearing shall be 50 cents per hour with a maximum of four hours. And I thought, I thought that was good for...
Who knows?
For the more outskirts areas, just because that was something that I, I recall you saying, we want them to stay for as long as, you know, four hours. So I thought that that would be good because then that would include the metered lot staying at four hours, the municipal lot, not the metered lot, it's village hall. And then notwithstanding the foregoing parking meters on Main Street from Prospect, Prospect Street to United Street shall be metered at, and this is open for discussion, shall be metered at 50 cents per 30 minutes with a maximum of 120 minutes, so keeping this Main Street at two hours. And then parking meters on North Front Street between Main and North Chestnut, North Chestnut Street between Main and North Front Street, Academy Street between North Chestnut and Church Street, and Church Street between Main Street and North Front Street, basically that block area, shall be metered at 50 cents per 60 minutes with a maximum of 120 minutes, two hours. And the parking meters at village hall, municipal lot, shall be metered at 50 cents per hour with no maximum. And I felt like this did combine some of what we were going for where it might, it wouldn't cap the amount of time someone could spend parked on Main Street, but it would encourage turnover the way Michael just talked about the one hour parking spots did. And I guess, I mean, my, my mindset is really just the idea that if somebody is like, so, I mean, there are people who absolutely have to park in front of a business, but if there are people who could park on the side street, that would allow for more of the people who absolutely have to park in front of those businesses to be able to do so. And it would encourage people to park on the side streets so that the people who, you know, maybe need to be closer can park on Main Street. Unfortunately, I guess they would pay a premium to do so, but that may be, that's open for discussion, obviously.
Yeah.
So we can make that 50 cents for 60 minutes and that would be the only change we would really need to make to make it all consistent.
50 cents per 60 minutes.
If, if you want to make it all consistent.
That I, I would be in agreement.
My inclination would be to make it consistent.
Okay.
I want to understand though, always saying that parking... I want to understand, though, always saying that parking in the Village Hall Municipal Lot shall be metered at...
Fifty cents an hour.
Fifty cents an hour, not per half hour, fifty cents per hour.
I think that's, what is it?
That's okay, no minimum, no maximum.
Can we go back to...
No maximum.
The Sally's original thing. Yeah, but that's what the section currently reads, is that Village Hall Municipal Lot shall be metered at fifty cents an hour with no maximum. So that's not changing.
There's no maximum, but the meter itself would have some kind of...
Yeah, you'd have to come back from whatever, you know, the meter will allow up to whatever it is.
Might be four hours.
Might be four hours.
But, but there's, but you could, you know, feed it all day, and there's no enforcement of not being able to park there.
Yeah, nobody's gonna come around with a little, you know, sticker on your tire.
Yeah. So I don't know, what do you, I'm, I'm totally, you know, I'm kind of differing to you guys, because I, I wrote up what I, what I thought we could do, but I'm not, you know, I really am wedded to any of these ideas.
Well, one of the things that we have to look at right now also is the fact that the...
Yes.
Which, Katie, I think you have a good sense of where we are with that right now?
It's a two-week turnaround, if.
We're first on the line.
Right. And it has gone back, we haven't been told whether or not there's anybody else on the waiting list. So it went back last week, hopefully we'll know by midweek this week whether or not someone else has requested it.
Okay. Can we find that out tomorrow?
I can try.
Okay. 'Cause, I mean, I obviously think we should set the public hearing for next week, and it's just to, you know, move as quickly as we can, both for everybody here to have some ease and peace of mind, but also just so that we can, you know, not, not lose more revenue than necessary in real week.
And now, Katie, what date we, we had set, I'm sorry, I'm gonna apologize, I was very ill today, so I'm kind of...
No, I'm sorry.
Very slow. Rice crackers, water, but, what, we had set at one point a two-week limit with the bagging.
Yes.
Do you recall that?
Yes.
So that would end next Wednesday.
So we could either extend it right now...
Or wait till next week. I think we can wait till next week, okay. Till then, okay. Any other discussion on the amendment?
Just, I, just tell me exactly what I should write here, so that I'll, I'll send this here, and you will have it. So, it should be notwithstanding foregoing, parking meters on Main Street from Prospect Street to Hewan Street shall be metered at fifty cents per sixty minutes with a maximum of parking twenty minutes. And then all these other parking meters, same thing. Okay?
Everything is same, so that we don't have to, people don't have to worry about, you know, walking around with a little pad about what they're gonna pay for what. And fifty cents an hour, no maximum in the lot.
Yep, that's part of it too. All right, should I just read it one more time?
Yes.
Okay.
So everybody understands?
The parking meter fees for all meters except as otherwise designated here in shall be fifty cents per hour with a maximum of four hours, notwithstanding the foregoing. Parking meters on Main Street from Prospect Street to Hewan Street, North Front Street between Main Street and North Chestnut Street, North Chestnut Street between Main Street and North Front Street, Academy Street between North Chestnut Street and Church Street, and Church Street between Main Street and North Front Street shall be metered at fifty cents per sixty minutes with a maximum of a hundred and twenty minutes, two hours. Parking meters at the Village Hall Municipal Lots shall be metered at fifty cents per hour with no maximum. All meters in the core business area will be bagged and no meter fees required from twelve-eleven to twelve-twenty-five to support local business holiday shopping. Done.
For voting on this, I want to say that this is not the only parking issue that we will take up. We have heard other discussion that would lead us to reconsider or consider maybe for the first time. The size of parking, whether we should introduce special spaces for compact cars and/or motorcycles, and other issues that might allow us to fit reasonably, safely, and maybe happily, for some of you, more parking in the downtown area. So that, that's something which is on our agenda, I believe that it comes from the thinking of people who have spoken here, and we will, but it's a different law. So we'll, we will take this up, I believe, as soon as we can.
Yeah, and, yeah, I would love to be a part of larger conversations.
And, and I promise that we will take into account the rest of the input of the business people and the residents. I, by the way, am one of those residents, you'll forgive me for introducing a personal note, who walks and goes into various shops for five minutes or ten minutes. There are people who live in the Village, shop in the Village, and walk in the Village.
I think all of them are...
I know that for sure, because I'm one of them.
So... Is there anything that we could or should do to help facilitate that?
Well, well, I, I don't want to take too much more of this time, but I promise you that we will absolutely be in touch, and that we will have a committee of people to assist us.
Yeah, most definitely. And I, I think, you know, I saw you taking an email address last week, so if you could help us with contacting people about it.
Shall we vote on this?
Actually, just, why don't you have anybody who's interested in participating, email the clerk's office, and I'll compile a list for the village board.
Oh, well, how about that? Thanks, Katie. You didn't need more work.
Okay, so, um...
So, can I, can I move to set the public hearing for next week on the, shall I call it, we don't have a local law number, but amending the definitions in section one ninety-eight of the Code of the Village of New Paltz?
Second?
At what time, though?
For, for Wednesday, September eleventh, at seven p.m.
Seven p.m.?
Seven p.m.
Okay. Seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I make a note that you might want to explain to people the reason why we can do this today, that we could never do this in a regular meeting, it's because today is Tuesday, so we've got to fulfill the... We could not have done this if this was a Wednesday, we would have to wait two weeks. We have a certain, by law, we have a certain amount of time that we have to notice things in the paper, and the only reason we can do it today is because we have a special meeting, otherwise, if it were a Wednesday, we'd have to wait two weeks before we could have this.
Good thing tomorrow's rush hour, 'cause that's why we had the meeting today.
Yes.
Do we need to do, do we need to take a formal action on the amended resolution here?
You just did?
Yeah.
I thought we did, I thought we voted on the public hearing.
That's, you can't, you can't take any other action other than...
That's the only action that we can take, that's fine, thank you very much.
I need my bunch of coin, Ariana, should be the second sign for any voices.
Yeah, yeah, we should accept it, that's our second agenda item. I'd like to move that we offer as Ariana as the second signature on bills and claims.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I figured I should.
Actually, I don't think we voted on the public hearing, so just...
No, I think we did.
Yeah, we did.
I think we did, yes.
Yeah, definitely, okay.
I just have a question, if the public hearing on this issue of the parking meters, then what's the next step here for that?
Then we could vote on it that night.
Think you could vote that?
Yeah, we would move to close the public hearing, and then we could vote on it. But yeah, we, obviously by now have done the public hearing first, if we're changing any of the...
How's the date of the closing?
It's next Wednesday, September eleventh, at seven p.m. And the reason, yeah, well, the reason for it being seven p.m. is because we have dedicated our meeting next week to work on, work with the DEP on our upcoming aqueduct shutdown, so there's like serious water issues that we said we're only gonna discuss that at this meeting, but obviously, this is timely, so we wanna take action on it and allow for public comment at the public hearing, but not interfere too much with the rest of the public.
Thank you.
Yeah, but, yeah, I mean, I'm only slightly worried that people will confuse the time, so if you've got it and you're sending an email out, I appreciate it. Seven.
Seven.
Thank you all for coming two weeks in a row, also, for, I mean, those of you who are here two weeks in a row, I know it extends your day significantly.
Should we move to voting?
Yeah, move to close the meeting? Oh, oh, we voted on the second, I'm sorry.
Seven, ten, eight, ten.
We can't do this short, we come off.
I need a second to close?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so I'm here, this is you, what, right?
And I'll put it up on the board, so you can mark it, 'cause I don't mind that you put it all so long.